Well, um, we'll go ahead and start. I know we've had a very brief break between our workshop and our regularly scheduled meeting, but have a full agenda, so we'll get started. I am fortunate enough today to introduce Pastor Brian Nugent from Generations Church. Pastor Nugent has been a pastor there, I believe, now, how many years? Six years. And each year, his church does some phenomenal things for the families and students here in our community, and I can't say enough about how generous they are. If you would, come forward and do an invocation for us. Pastor Nugent, please.
Sure. I just want to say, first of all, on behalf of our congregation, we want you to know how much we appreciate what you do, and on a regular basis, we pray, we pray for you, and we want you to know that we stand behind you and we are here for you. So, let us pray. Lord, we come before you today, and we give you thanks. We stand upon the scriptural admonition to pray for those who are in authority so that we might live a quiet and peaceable life. I thank you for all of these commissioners, their staffs, that serve, and I pray your blessing upon their homes, their families, their children, the sacrifice they make for the good of our county. Lord, we pray your blessing upon them. We pray in this meeting today and the meetings to come, Lord, we pray for guidance, we pray for wisdom that could only come from the Lord, we pray for direction that you would give them in very complicated matters, we pray for wisdom and consensus, we pray for patience with each other, we pray, Lord, that we would be quick to, uh, quick to listen and slow to speak, and, Lord, that this meeting today would be profitable for our county. And, Lord, we just give you thanks again for these commissioners and their families. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is Chris here?
Yes.
Come on up, Chris. Chris.
(Inaudible).
(Inaudible). I want to welcome Chris from Capitol Area Healthy Start, and we have a proclamation today that recognizes SIDS and Infant Loss Awareness Month, and I'd like to read that to you at this time, after I put on my glasses. Whereas October is SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, a time for families and for our community to remember the children who are not with us today, especially those who died during their gestation or within the first year of their sweet lives. And whereas this month is a month to comfort the grieving parents, families, and friends in their time of pain and heartache, and to provide hope for the future. Whereas in 2018, in the state of Florida, approximately 2,829 families lost their infants to stillbirth or infant death. And in 2018, 56 local families right here in Leon or Waukala counties lost their babies to miscarriage, stillbirth, or infant death. And one in five pregnancies end in miscarriage, and one in three pregnancies do not result in a healthy newborn. And whereas the availability of information and support is of the utmost importance to families who suffer from pregnancy and infant loss. And whereas even the briefest lives are valuable and the grief of those who mourn must be respected and not trivialized, and whereas the community is informed and educated about SIDS, pregnancy, and infant loss can respond better with compassion to affected families. And whereas our Walk to Remember has been held in Leon County now for 17 years, and we intend to host it for many years into the future, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we hereby proclaim the month of October as SIDS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. It's assigned by all seven county commissioners, as well as our county administrator, and I am honored to present it to you today.
Thank you.
(Applause).
I would like to take a moment and just thank the board for their continued support for our families, and we are hosting our 17th Annual Walk to Remember on October 10th, and this is an opportunity for families in our community to come together to support those grieving families, and I would like to extend that invitation to all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ready to go ahead? Thank you, sir. I am joined by Brittany Peller, correct?
Yes.
For our annual proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am honored to be able to present this proclamation every year. Certainly, our two proclamations today are both critically important issues and deal with loss, and they both have Awareness Month in March, I mean, I'm sorry, in October, and walks in October. And there's, I think, a nice tie between the two, and I'm glad we're highlighting both today. I normally mention my grandmother every year. This is a issue, breast cancer, that affects my family, and it's very important to us and many, but I want to take a moment of personal privilege here and mention Koki Roberts, one of the founding mothers of NPR, ABC News. And one of the things that stuck out to me in the remembrances of her last week was that she showed up to a meeting with survivors of breast cancer to speak a mere two weeks before she passed. This was an issue that she was committed to. So, in her honor, the proclamation reads, "Whereas making strides against breast cancer is the American Cancer Society's premier event to raise awareness and funds to fight breast cancer. And whereas since 1993, more than eight million walkers across the country have raised more than $810 million through Making Strides events to help fight breast cancer. And whereas making strides against breast cancer is a non-competitive walk that encourages individuals or teams of all ages to walk to honor breast cancer survivors, remember those who have lost the battle, educate women, and I will add men, about breast cancer, prevention, and early detection, and to raise funds and awareness to help find a cure. And whereas the money raised through Making Strides against breast cancer helps the American Cancer Society fight breast cancer with research grants, offers a 24-hour cancer hotline, provides preprograms and services for cancer patients and their families, and advocates for public policies to provide access to quality health care and screenings." Excuse me. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of October 2019 is recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Leon County as well as the United States. Furthermore, the board encourages citizens of Leon County to participate in the Making Strides of Leon Walk on Sunday, October 20th, 2019, to raise awareness for breast cancer and express sincere appreciation to all participants and supporters for making a difference in the fight against breast cancer. Signed today by all the commissioners and the county administrator. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate being able to come here and talk to you guys. I'm honored to be representing the 15 committee members who have put this event together and the countless participation that we've had from the community and the support. Because of this, we're able to say that we have 39% less death rates, and we continue to hope that number increases until it's gone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think next up, we have Coach Bernie. Wow. How do you, you still look the same age as when I was an undergrad in 1991.
I'm not sure how they're going to open the doors at FSU.
This is not fair. Commissioner Loes.
Forty-five years at Florida State, Bernie Waxman. How about a round of applause, huh?[696.82][696.82](Applause). What an institution. I mean, I can't imagine that they're even going to be opening doors next week, you know? How's that going to work? Don't you have, like, secret keys to everything?[711.82][711.82](Laughter). So, we wanted to take a moment. At the TDC the other day, we honored Bernie. We thought it was appropriate that we did the same thing here. It's rare that you find somebody in our community that's done the things he has done, and a lot of which have touched a lot of us over the years in the county. And I'll go through the proclamation here. So, "Whereas Bernard Bernie Waxman officially retired on July the 17th to pursue another project in the works after 45 years of loyal dedication to Florida State University and the Tallahassee community. And whereas Bernie began his employment with Florida State University in 1974 directing FSU's intermurals program," I remember that, "and for the first 17 years of his career, then oversaw the Florida State Seminoles Athletic Facilities for the next 28 years. And whereas Bernie was a founding member of the Tallahassee Sports Council since its inception in 1989, has been a dedicated member, actively serving all aspects of the sports community within Leon County for 30 years. And whereas Bernie has been an integral part in advancing the local sports industry by expanding the relationship between Florida State Athletics and the Leon County sports community. And whereas Bernie, as a former FSU track and field athlete, has been instrumental in the development of Appalachia Regional Park and Leon County, being chosen to host the 2021 National Collegiate Athletic Association Division One Cross-Country Track National Championships." So, not a bad deal. And whereas throughout his career, Bernie has provided guidance, leadership, and friendship to his fellow coworkers, coaches, and, most important, student athletes. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize and honor Bernie Waxman dated the 24th day of September, and it is signed by all of my fellow commissioners and the county administrator. So, please join me in thanking Bernie for all the things he's done for us.[826.13][826.13](Applause).
Thank you all very much. I've been honored to be a part of a team, as you guys are a part of a team, and we've been able to accomplish a lot of great things, but certainly, the team that you've put together here, we're looking forward to seeing the wonderful things that you're going to do for Leon County and the Tallahassee community. So, thank you for what you do. I'm humbled, I'm honored, and just thank you.
We love you.[856.88][856.88](Laughter).
Next up, we have a presentation from, I know, so Claudia, there she is, from our Ford Department of Health in Leon County Extension. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager, and County Attorney. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a brief update on our Community Health Improvement Plan. I'm going to refer to that as CHIP, so that I don't have to use so many words. And just to refresh your memory, the Leon County Health Department, with a number of community partners, conducted a community health assessment that was finalized in 2017, and we did that through a health equity lens. We looked at data for the whole community, the whole county, but then we also did door-to-door surveys in six of the poorest neighborhoods in Leon County. A steering team of 25 members identified a list of priorities for the CHIP, and these priority areas are on the slide, and they're further delineated in the CHIP, which is on our website. It's quite long, so I didn't make you hard copies, but I'm happy to if you'd like one. You'll be happy to know I'm not going to go over every single one of these. I'm going to just give you a glimpse of the progress that we've made on three of the areas. So, an overarching purpose of the CHIP is to pull together the different groups that are already working on these priority issues, so that they can focus their efforts and they can come up with a couple of common goals that they work towards. This is not easy work, and the number of priorities make it a super ambitious undertaking, but we are the most highly educated county in the state, and we have a lot of people who care a lot and want to see improvement in the social conditions that determine health. So, again, I'm just going to give you a glimpse of the progress that's been made on three areas. Economic stability is the first one, and of course, it's not my area of expertise, but it is a critical priority, because without it, good health is much harder to achieve. Rebecca Weaver from the United Way is the lead for this priority. She oversees two related work groups, affordable housing and sustainable employment. The Affordable Housing Work Group's goal is to increase safe and sanitary affordable housing through increasing such units as part of mixed-use housing in various neighborhoods through a public-private collaboration. They spent the first year surveying potential partners to figure out who wanted to participate on this journey. They identified 24 partners, and then year two was spent securing a commitment from the partners to increase affordable housing units outside of student housing. So, they're still working on that. The next step will be to further define the availability of these units, when they're going to be available, map them, and create a timeline for when they're going to be available. Housing's a very complicated issue. Again, not my area of expertise, but I'm happy to take any questions and bring you answers in the future. The second work group is the Sustainable Employment Work Group, and they have been focused on connecting employers with skilled workers. They've conducted hiring fairs with large employers in under-resourced neighborhoods as a start to make sure potential employees understand existing opportunities. They also sought to answer the question, "What's keeping people from getting jobs?" It's a question that I know you all have worked on quite a bit. They surveyed 13 large employers, and they learned that lack of childcare, lack of transportation, and the hours of the job because of the demands in their lives were major barriers to working. So, the next step is to continue to connect job-ready candidates with employers and to work on addressing the identified barriers. Again, this is not easy work, and I applaud the progress made by these two work groups. So, moving on, the Mental Health Council, led by Doctors Jay Reeve and Heather Flynn, was off and running, really even before the CHIP was completed. Their goals are to increase access to quality mental health services. Specifically, excuse me, specifically, they wanted to increase the number of prescribers of psychiatric medications, so increasing nurse practitioners and physicians was part of the plan. And also to provide services where people want them in a culturally competent manner. They're also focused on educating people about mental health and available resources to achieve it. So far, they have accomplished, with FSU College of Nursing, the creation of a nurse-practitioner program that trains nurse practitioners to become certified psychiatric nurse practitioners so that they can be prescribers. And they're also working on creating a psychiatric residency program at TMH in partnership with FSU College of Medicine. 211 Big Bend has a mental health navigator that helps primary care providers connect their patients in need of mental health services with providers, and Whole Child Leon has a pediatric mental health navigator that helps connect children with needed mental health services. They have also coordinated several Be Kind to Your Mind community events, aimed at raising awareness and connecting people to resources, and Nicole Everett, our Leon County's Oprah, made a series of videos to educate the public about the importance of mental health and tried to work on the stigma that's associated, remove the stigma that's associated with seeking mental health services. The last area for today's briefing is nutrition. This work group is led by Melissa Dancer from TMH, and it is focused on reducing childhood obesity. We are fortunate in Leon County to have data on childhood obesity by school. So, we were able to work with the two schools that had the highest third-grade obesity rate, and the Early Childhood Obesity Prevention Leadership Team, which is a major partner of the nutrition work group, secured funding from the Foundation for Leon County Schools to implement a Healthy School Challenge Pilot Program during the last school year. The purpose was to create a culture of health at Bond and Oak Ridge, two Title I elementary schools. The program had multiple components. I'm not going to tell you about all of those, but I am going to tell you about the sugar-sweetened beverage reduction project at both schools, because that was really a highlight of the program. Children, parents, teachers were all educated about the importance of drinking water instead of sugar-sweetened beverages. It's a great way to reduce calories. Drinking your calories is, you know, something that most of us can eliminate just by substituting with water. They were given water bottles that they decorated to kind of incentivize them to drink water. They had a special challenge, and everybody in the school, the parents, were all educated about this. As you can imagine, there were many issues to work through. I mean, you all know what happens when you drink a lot of water. You've got third graders drinking a lot of water. But the teachers, you know, worked through all those barriers, and one of the barriers was not having one of those fillable water bottle stations at the school, so they now have them at both schools. But it was an overwhelming success. The kids all drank a lot more water. So, it works. It was a pilot, so we learned from it, and there's more to do. TMH is going to continue the Healthy Hydrator Program at Oak Ridge this year. So, that's my high-level update, just a, you know, there's a lot of work going on, and I'm happy to tell the story. It's not necessarily my story, but I'm happy to tell it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Claudia. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Claudia. I appreciate the update and look forward to seeing the report. You said we could access it on the website, is that right? So, we can get a copy downloaded from there? It's fantastic. So, just for the ones you highlighted, it sounds like the mental health and the nutrition groups, you're highlighting programs where they're actually starting to work in the schools or, I really love the nurse practitioner training program. That's a really critical need in the residency program. Those are great steps forward. Everything you talked about with affordable housing and employment is incredibly important, and with those two, it is a challenging and complicated issue, so I'm not going to put you on the spot for details about that. But just last week, we approved funding for a housing leadership group that has been a three-year effort by city and county and has brought together, I believe, some of the same partners that United Way is working with. So, for that type of program or employment in the work we're doing with OEV and others, are you confident that we are working across these various groups? We've been establishing these different committees at the same time, and they understand what they're doing? Or do we need to do more work to kind of break down the silos, perhaps? We wouldn't want to create new silos. We've done a lot of work to break those down. So, that's the, my real question here is, are we sure that we're on the right track, and is there anything more we can do?
It's hard for me to answer that question. I know that Shinkton and Michael Parker from the city are involved. I think they know the other players, but I, if you have specific concerns about certain players not being at the table, please let me know, and I'll be happy to check with Rebecca.
It's, my concern is not as much about not being at the table, but that we have two tables that might overlap with a lot of people, and because there is a new approach to housing that the city and county are funding, and this group will become standalone at some point, want to have the best ROI for the efforts at United Way through community health and for us, and making sure we are in alignment. So, Shinkton's nodding behind you, so I think we're on the right track, and I will trust that everyone's talking. I just wanted to check with you about that. Yeah.
And I appreciate that. Again, one of the overarching purposes of this is to do exactly what you're asking, that, you know, bring people together around the priority issue so that we don't have a lot of silos.
That's great. I, maybe as we go into the next phase of some of these groups, we can just make sure that anything new that's been created on city and county side or any other groups in town, that we're bringing these pieces together. We don't have as many resources as some communities, and we will be far more effective. We all know that if we're working together. So, thank you for your efforts. This is incredible progress, and glad for the update.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn, thank you for your report. I would like to focus on the maternal and child health area. On yesterday, a young lady named Sue Gallagher spoke to our community over at the Civic Center about implicit biases and so forth. It was a packed house. She mentioned the area of healthcare, among other areas, is having difficulty sometimes of lifting up to policymakers and the ability of institutions to embrace data, which may not be a part of their normative range of radar, if you will. Dr. Hallifield lifted up on yesterday and has shared in this room with this board that the data sets indicate that African-American women are more likely, two to one, the ratio to die in childbirth as white women in this community. Also, it was Ms. Gallagher's emphasis in one of her slides, the mentioning of the disparity in infant mortality. That was a national concern, state concern, but it happens here in Leon County, if my remembrance is correct, that infant mortality is a little higher than in other areas of the state. We looked at the 32304 initiative, and those things have come up. What specific steps is the CHIP placing upon the emphases of closing the gap in disparity of black infant mortality? That's something that a state spokesperson came here, and she put it up there. She talked about, she told us these things. Hallifield comes and tells us all the time, he can get a time to come, but is there any specific focus on this important health category by the CHIP?
There is, and actually, almost everything on here affects infant mortality and the health of the mother. So, all of those social determinants of health, that's kind of an academic term, but basically all of those things, housing, environment, education, employment, all of those things affect a person's health. And if you're not in great health and you have children, you know, you may be more likely to die during childbirth, and you may be more likely to experience an infant death. So, there are some things that we're specifically focused on with the maternal and child health plan. That has to do with making sure that everybody understands safe sleep, putting the baby to bed on its back with no blankets, nothing in the crib, no pillow. That's still hard for That's still hard for some people to do, but that really is the recommended way to put a baby to bed. Focused on increasing breastfeeding, you know, those usual things, getting early prenatal care. We're also really focused on our syphilis outbreak right now because it's spreading to pregnant women and babies. So that, all of the, all of these things kind of will help with that. It is a very complicated issue. I will tell you that some of the sort of back-of-the-napkin calculations that we've seen show that in Palm Beach, where they do have a Children's Services Council, they have reduced the disparity in infant mortality. They've been working on this for years, but they have.
I have attended multiple National Medical Association conferences, and I've learned that there is no exemption based on education, income. It just does not matter if you're a PhD or no D when it comes to African-American women. They all are equally subject to infant mortality. It's just amazing. And some have postulated that it is stress and the racism of the environment that takes a toll. I've heard that in medical rooms. Dr. Gallagher on yesterday did not state that, but her entire talk was about the environment of racism. I think that, given, as you pointed out early in your presentation, that ours is the most educated county in the state of Florida, it behooves us, our sensitivity and response to black death and whether these lives matter. I would love to see some special energies placed on maternal and child health. Some years ago, our board, this board, took the walk to establish women and children's health in the Bond community, what they do now. And that was approximately, I don't know, 16, 15, 17 years ago, that this board funded and understood. But there has not been any closing of the gap in that category of infant mortality. And I think that, just me thinking and given the duration with which this issue has been before us, that we really ought to put a little more oomph on that. And I would really respect and appreciate if you were able to guide a little more emphasis in that area. And I'm sensitive to syphilis and all of that as well. But that right there makes us look back when we're the so-called smartest community in Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always appreciate how you, you're kind of our go-to person in all things health-related, even though I know you're with Florida, State of Florida Department of Health, that it really means a lot how broad your reach is in our community. So thank you for all of this. And all of us do have information coming to us from different sources and different areas. And I know that Commissioner Maddox, I think, got an agenda item coming up in October on needle exchange to help address contagious diseases, I think, HPC and others. And I wondered if you can tell us what the interaction would be between the county and your health department as that comes or evolves, if you could address that.
Sure, sure.
It's just an update.
Sure. So the Infectious Disease Elimination Act, that's what it's called, it was passed during the last legislative session. And it allows county commissions to pass an ordinance to allow a needle, a clean needle and syringe exchange program in their county. And they would have an agreement with, there's a list of facilities or agencies that could run the needle exchange program. And the health department will have some kind of technical advisory role, which we're still learning about. We're supposed to get an orientation on that in a couple of weeks. So I can tell you that there's a lot of interest in our community. It is a, you know, it's something that is known to reduce HIV infection, hepatitis C infection, overdose deaths. It reduces dirty needles in the environment. It connects people to substance abuse treatment and mental health services and all kinds of, you know, healthcare services. So it's a best practice. And so we're really happy to see that the legislature made this move. There are a couple of providers in town that are interested in running this program. The obstacle, I think, is that you can't use any local, state, or federal tax dollars to run the program. So whoever runs it will need, there'll need to be some private fundraising that goes on. But there is definitely an interest. And we don't know how many people we're talking about, probably a small number to begin with. So we're excited about the possibility.
Thank you. I think the way that that would enable people to connect with help that they need is probably one of the best parts of that. Thank you very much. I just wanted to kind of catch up on where we were.
You're welcome.
Seeing other commissioners in queue. Thank you so much, Claudia, for that report and all the brief. There's more comprehensive stuff if we need to see it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, this time we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items, items eight, nine, 13, and 14 pulled by Commissioner Proctor.
Commissioner Proctor, although I did not pull item 11, I did want to recognize Major Blackman is here with the Florida Highway Patrol. Major Blackman, if you don't mind, he's come to support the item to name the interchange at I-10 Mayhand Drive after Bill Dyer, Trooper Bill Dyer, who passed away in line of duty. And we're excited your agency is representing here today. So thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioner's under item number eight.
I'm sorry. We have a motion to approve the remaining items. Motion has been made to approve remaining items, seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, would you just repeat which items were pulled from consent, please?
Mr. Administrator, can you repeat those items for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure. Commissioners, item eight, nine, 13, and 14.
Plus 11.
Plus 11. And, and with that, Commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Proctor, item eight is a program and funding agreement with COCA. You'll recall that this is consistent with your direction for the extension of a one-year contract with COCA back at the beginning of the budget process here this year. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. I also just wanted to let you know that COCA's new executive director, Catherine Spiehar, has joined us as well, as well as our staff. Again, happy to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Noting that this item has a number of moving parts, it is funded from a base amount of $150,000 grant. It appears to be funded from a one-cent sales tax and funded from a one-fourth cent tax as well. And it really is sort of a difficult read to match all of the veins and arteries that are flowing into COCA from public dollars. Concerns that I have is the notion that eligible cultural organizations in 2020, that eligible cultural organization, and I'm looking at the bottom of page three, what is an eligible cultural organization with so many strings of public dollars flowing to COCA? And I think, if I read it right, this is a three-year commitment, which is sort of an unusual for us outside of a hardcore service contract. I'm curious to know what are culturally eligible organizations? What does that mean? And I guess I'm a little sensitive after sitting through Mrs. Dr. Sue Gallagher's report. And she told us last, yesterday, that it's words like those that appear to be, she used the term hidden signals or code words and stuff like that. So I'm just coming out of that kind of workshop, and I don't know what a culturally eligible organization is, but it seems that that's the kind of organization that might get some of this public fund. Could someone clarify that?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Proctor, I'd ask Carrie Posey to come on up. Yeah, I see Carrie's on her way.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As the Administrator noted, we do have Kathleen Spiehar, who is the new executive director of COCA here. I think she's been there now for probably all of six or seven weeks. But in your packet also, you have a copy of the COCA's Cultural Facilities Matching Grant Program. And in that, it does outline the basic eligibility for the organizations to receive the funds. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. They physically have to be located within the city of Tallahassee or Leon County, be a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization, and they have to be provided at least three years of year-round arts and cultural programming in Leon County. Let's just hit the high points.
Okay. That's what that word means, eligible?
Eligible, correct. That meet, that basic eligibility, correct.
Okay. And is that an eligibility factor that would be inclusive in making sure that we have diversity among those organizations which would receive these dollars?
Absolutely. The program is open to all nonprofit organizations within the county.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, I move this item. Items one and two, options one and two.
Move options one and two for gen item eight, seconded by Commissioner Loes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Proctor, item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Proctor. This item, again, seeks your approval to participate in a new state and federal Medicaid program to provide increased payments, as it says, for Leon County for Medicaid patients transported by Leon County EMS. This is not, unlike several of the IGT, Intergovernmental Transfer Programs that we currently use, where we match our local dollars to Medicaid dollars to draw down more here locally, this is just the first one that we've been able to access relative to transport from EMS. And Chief Abrams here can discuss this in greater detail, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
My curiosity, Chief Abrams, as I see you there, this is monies for the ambulance, is that right?
Yes, Commissioner, this particular program is for ambulance transport.
Okay. Is it not accurate that the program that we have now, that people who don't pay their ambulance fee, that the county actually can pursue them, sue them, or place them under a collection, outside collection, or even put a lien or something? How does that work? How do we track people who don't pay their bills right now?
The current county policy does provide for a collections program where those accounts go to collections regardless of the type of account. Now Medicare and Medicaid accounts are not eligible for collections.
So those are exempted?
Those are exempt from collections, yes.
Okay. That's my curiosity, Commissioners, that we would receive, is this $800,000 a grant?
Yes, sir. Based off the estimates, it's going to be based off the number of transports that we provide
Right.
For qualifying Medicaid recipients. We estimate that it would be $800,000 additional dollars coming to the county.
Okay. My concern is that, you all know, I hate the program that we have in place. A lot of people are very, very sick, and that ride across town is about $1,200 if they pick you up. But it seemed like it would be conflictual to have a, to go after people with collections and all of that, and we were also receiving $800,000 to offset losses for transportation. I'm wanting to make sure that we are not receiving $800,000 and also suing, pursuing, going after people simultaneously. But I see the county attorney shaking his head.
That's a Medicaid issue.
Okay, good, good, good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the item, option one.
Item's been moved, item nine, seconded by Commissioner Loes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Thank you, sir. Item number 13, Commissioners, seek your approval of the FY 2020 CHSP grant recommendations in the amount of $1.3 million. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I'm really, but I wanted to raise a question here with our CHSP funding for 2020, and to make note of the fact that the 32304 initiative, some of which was shared in part by Ms. Blackburn in her health presentation. The 32304 is begging for a needed relief. It needs a lift. And Commissioners, I believe that next year's budget, when that final report comes back from our quest to do the deep dive that has occurred all summer with the multiple agencies that have rolled up their sleeves on the 32304, I'm suggesting to us now that the response to the needs that are so poignant might receive a special lift and effort on our part. It's very, very difficult to go to other funding agencies and players, actors, stakeholders outside of our county if we are not committed to riding some of the difficulties there. So my interest in pulling this item was to look at, I think, some good things that we have, these 10 categories that we're looking at, but to make sure that we come up with, we need a new category, and it has to be a 32304 category. And I don't know how you say it, and I know that's geographic-specific, but that area is specifically a hard-hit impoverished area that it hopefully will be a human services effort, and that's what we're talking about, human services, that needs to be expanded and focused in that area. And I wanted to lay that out and ask this commission's consideration and allow for this ask to matureate with you over the course of the next year. Not asking for money this year, ain't got all the findings, but I'm asking for your open consideration for an issue and a malignancy that we have here in this community dealing with 32304. So I lift that to share. We need an 11th category beyond the 10 that we have.
Thank you. I have a couple of Commissioners in queue. Commissioner Maddox, were you?
Mr. Chairman, in budge of caution and through recommendation, our advisement by the county attorney, I'm going to recuse myself for this, from this, from vote on this item. The Boys and Girls Club of the Big Bend is a recipient of CHSP funding, and I, being CEO, thought, county attorney, thought I should recuse myself for the appearance of a conflict. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick questions on CHSP process since Commissioner Proctor pulled this item. Mr. County Administrator, you said that the needs assessment report that we have been hoping for, for a very long time, is coming in for a landing in the next couple of months. That will provide us an opportunity of reflecting on the categories and the percentage of funding in those different categories and the data to support that decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that gets to Commissioner Proctor's question about whether we can look at the categories, and we will have an item in the next couple of months to do that, yes?
Correct.
So
Redefine them.
Well, having served on the Joint Planning Council before it was disbanded, my memory, and Mr. County Administrator, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the categories and the funding levels were set when CHSP was created, and so this is a review of all of that. But we will simply already, we already have an agenda item. That's what I was asking about to clarify, so we can look at the categories. However, in specific response to your comments, I just, I guess I wanted to say now, and if there's anything in the report, or if we can add, if this is germane to Commissioner Proctor's question, and it comes back in a couple of months, I think we actually had some struggle when we dedicated funding to, I'm not sure if it was, there's so many different zones, opportunity zone or something else, promise zone, that's what it was a few years ago, right?
Yes.
And there was kind of parallel grant process, and since most of the organizations we support provide services within 32304 and beyond, I just, I'm going to have a concern about targeting just an area because I think we get to that in the agency support. But again, I'm going to look forward to this discussion when the item comes back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just as a reminder, Commissioners, too, the board previously gave us formal direction to instruct the consultants on the two studies this summer, this one as well as the Children's Services Study, to specifically examine 32304 for needs that may come back to us as recommendations. So those will, those will come back to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, might I say that in response to Commissioner Dozier's comment, our notes indicated in the area among those 10 categories, that the area of promise zone, that funding for the promise zone is solely offered by the city of Tallahassee. So there is no county commitment to anything zone-specific. However, might we note, we do have the CRA, we do have the downtown, we do have the French Town, the Southside CRA. So it's not like this would be an anomaly to what we do currently with respect to specific areas of focus. We are not committed here, and our notes tell us that the promise zone is funded by the city of Tallahassee. So there is room for us to expand our thought to match the strides and efforts of the city if we view a particular zone, 32304, as we have done with multiple other emphases on zoning CRA and so forth, most notable and probably the most obvious. Thank you. And I would like to move the item.
I have moved an item 13, been seconded by Commissioner Loach. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Administrator.
Show Commissioner Maddox as having recused.
That's right, I'm sorry. Thank you. Item 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item 14 comes to you this time each year and seeks your approval of your agreement with the state of Florida for the Health Department's state-mandated public health services, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask Ms. Blackburn a question. Ms. Blackburn, this item that comes before us tells this Commission that this new public health contract is going to continue to follow the strategic initiatives that have been set forth, and it will continue the county's support of primary health care through CareNet. And it also will promote access to basic health and welfare services to our community members. But isn't it accurate that our primary health care is not expanding, and the actual delivery of medical care services has become less accessible through the county's Health Department, and that the state has actually cut back on monies available for such purposes?
It is correct that we are moving away from primary care, like where you would call us your provider, your doctor, your nurse practitioner. That, that role has really been assumed more by the federally qualified health centers because that's specifically what they're funded to do. Where we do some gap services, sexually transmissible diseases, immunizations, we have a refugee clinic, but we're more population-based, and we do a lot with infectious diseases. So in family planning, that's the other thing. So we, yeah, over the years, probably for the last seven years, the primary care, as you would normally think about it, has decreased.
Okay. I thought that was accurate. I think, Ms. Blackburn, we talked about it just briefly before meeting here, that the 32304 initiative, it actually begs the state for additional special funding for this area. And I'm asking your consideration of pursuing allocations to offset health disparities in that area and that zip code, which have been captured by your office and other medical trackers of health. There's no question that the need is there, as, I mean, Commissioner Dozier would argue that it's needed a lot of other places, and I would agree with her. It's that we have quantified specifically to that area, greater need, and I'm asking your pursuit with the support of the county's lobbying team and all of that, great apparatus, we need more money, we need more service, we need more primary health care. And then if the services of what the Health Department once provided as a primary health center, and it no longer is the primary health center, then there ought to be a correlating transfer of support to our federally qualified health centers, which would be both neighborhood and bond. They need more money. So they're picking up fallen services, constricting services that the Health Department did provide, once provided, but they're not doing that now. And there has been no correlating increase of dollars to the FQHCs, which is doing the work, which once upon a time was that of the Health Department. So I'm asking that next year, Vince, that we're taking Ms. Blackburn's words into consideration and that we're offsetting, should I say, we're onsetting help and stimulus to the FQHCs that are doing the heavy lifting of primary, primary care in our community. And the second thing, Vince, is that we do everything to package the ask as the legislature is coming to town, that we package, and we have a lot of notes. Rachael has a lot of data, and it ain't completed, but we showed out enough to go in front of the Florida Legislature for a special funding request for 32304. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I move this item. Thank you so much, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Motion's been made to move item 14 on the Consent Agenda, seconded by Commissioner Loach. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion passes. That concludes our Consent Agenda items that have been pulled for discussion. And any citizens at this time to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one speaker card in, Veronica Barrington.
Ms. Barrington. Good afternoon, how are you? Good. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Veronica Barrington. My address is 1647 Coralwood Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. Yes, I'm going to ask my husband to come up, please. Arthur Barrington. And we're here today to address some concerns and issues that we have concerning the Orange Meridian Project and some going, happenings that's going on around us. We've been here in Tallahassee as an established business since 2007, and we moved in the Orange Avenue area where the project is going on in 2009. And we've been established there as a business with a legal address and, you know, electric and everything. We've been the only established business in that area. And the concerns we have, this, that we want to address that, you know, there's been, we're not just in and out, we've been established there for, when the project is finished, I believe it's in 2015, I think we'll be there at least 13 years. And we just want to bring that to the Board's attention, that it's our only livelihood for the last 13 years there at the Orange Avenue. And also the other issues that I would like to address that, that when I say legal, I mean we are licensed, and we pay sales tax, and we have a state license in that area. And we notice, too, that there's others that has kind of migrated in that area that are not licensed, and it has taken effect on our business. And we know this is somewhat of a state matter, and we have addressed the state concerning it. But we're just concerning, our concern is, is in the future about our business and our livelihood being in that area. And we do think that it's a good idea, and it's a good, great project that's going on. And what I, I would like to say, when I spoke with the state about the others that was migrating in that area, and I said that it caused effect on our business, some of our clientele probably wasn't coming to the area because of some of the happenings that's happening there now. Some other unlicensed, I wouldn't call them vendors, that has crossed the street from us, behind us in the woods, has really brought effect to our business concerning that area. And we spoke with one of the congressmen, as he came to our business on Saturday to purchase foods, Congressman Lawson, about the happenings that were going on. And our concern was that, you know, how was other businesses, other establishments allowing people to come in the area where we, and they're not licensed, state, and they're not paying sales tax? And that's a lot of our concern for that area there. And moving forward, we would like to see some action taken against them, because I know it's against the law to have a local business in the state without, just set up, just not being licensed. So that's one of our concerns. But our greatest concern was just, you know, how was it going to affect our business going forward? And we just want to put it before the Board to just let you all know that we are legal, and we're just not in and out, we've been established there with a legal address and, you know, in that area. And I don't know if my husband wanted to say anything, and that was our concern, concern of the project that's coming forward. We think it's a good thing that it's being cleaned up over there, that's really good. So, and that was my concern, and I know my husband wanted to address you all of now.
Good afternoon, Congressman. What mainly what my wife is saying is, we more concerned about where are we going and how are we going, our business going to go forth because of what's going on, the development in the area? And that is our main concern, because we've been there all these years. And I noticed in Leon County, vendors pop up everywhere. And really, just looking around, I don't really know what position, I mean, or what area to go in, because there's so many popped up everywhere. But we've been established for all these years in that location, and that's been our only source of income. We just been talking to different people and about things that's been going on, but ain't nothing been getting done. So that's our main concern. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Good hearing this.
Good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not responding to the Speaker, but I would like to ask my aide to, to meet with the Barringtons and to get a concise understanding of their grievances, and that we might package those and present them to the county administrator, and if need be, to distribute to the Board, to crystallize their ask and to know a little more specific their, the nature of their concerns, if, if, if the Board is permitting of that. Rachael, if you would get with the Barrington and make sure we get X, Y, and Z.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Mr. Administrator, any other speakers at this time on non-agenda items?
There are no other speaker cards, sir.
All right, moving on to our general business, item number 16.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number 16 seeks your acceptance, Commissioners, of the 2019 Leon County Annual Report. As you know, Commissioners, this is an item that I bring to you each year as required by the Florida statutes, but this is my favorite state mandate, if you will. And so I'm very proud and excited once again to fulfill this requirement on behalf of all of the men and women of Leon County government. As we've done in the past, Commissioners, we've produced a short video to promote the annual report and share our story with as many of the citizens we serve as possible. This is important, Commissioners, as you know, because we're only able to achieve the results that we'll be highlighting tonight with their active involvement and input and support from our citizens. And following the, the video, Commissioners, I have just a few slides, which will delve a little bit deeper into the significant accomplishments that we've been able to achieve together over the last year. And I know, Commissioners, after you, you see this video and, and the presentation, and get an opportunity to view the annual report, you will be just as proud as I am to be a part of this team at Leon County. So to kick things off, Matt, can you cue the video?
2019 was another year of great progress for Leon County toward realizing an ambitious vision for our community and setting a standard for performance, fiscal stewardship, and best practices for local governments everywhere. This annual report takes a look back at the progress of the past year. It highlights Leon County's commitment to investing in infrastructure, creating places for people and businesses to thrive, and building a culture of innovation and co-creation, all of which makes our county one of the best places to live, work, and play. Our dedicated employees take special pride in setting the standard each day by providing essential services like EMS, public works, parks, libraries, and so many others that serve and shape our community. Because of that mission, in 2019, Southern Living named us one of the South's best communities because of our focused efforts on becoming a premier destination for adventure, culture, and sports tourism. And we had another record year for tourism, from sold-out crowds at the Capitol Cascades Amphitheater to the many signature events that draw visitors from around the globe. The past year also brought a different kind of visitor, Hurricane Michael, which ravaged our Western neighbors and tested us like no other storm. As the nation's first hurricane-strong community, Leon County Government led our community's largest and most effective disaster response ever. We also continued growing our year-round preparedness events and keeping citizens informed with cutting-edge technology, all so that we can be even more resilient for the future. With that same dedication to ensuring our community's brightest future, Leon County stayed focused on our bold goals to enhance our quality of life and protect our environment as we continued removing septic tanks in southern Leon County, eliminated fees at all our rural waste sites, and continued protecting the health of our precious water bodies countywide. And because building community is about building connections, we engaged citizens on our community's growth, hosted our annual Create an Equal event with a powerful symphony performance followed by a frank conversation on race and racial equality, served our veterans, and revitalized a neighborhood with our 9/11 Day of Service. This commitment to service is at the heart of everything we do in Leon County. It drives us to be the best in our fields. In 2019, our dedicated Leon County employees continued to set the highest standards in public service by earning more than a dozen national awards. These employee-led efforts have been key to keeping Leon County among the most efficient and affordable counties anywhere. And to that end, in 2019, the county began a multi-year budgeting plan which ensures the county's long-term fiscal viability and avoids $4.6 million in planned tax and fee increases. While we will continue to face the same challenges of communities and governments everywhere... While we will continue to face the same challenges of communities and governments everywhere else, as we look back at the progress of the last year, we see a county that has proven to be a government that listens to the people we serve, solves our problems, and ensures that our community continues to be a place like nowhere else. Please learn more about all of Leon County's efforts this year on behalf of and alongside our community in the two thousand nineteen annual report. Commissioners, as I mentioned, the annual report video is always a hard act to follow, but I've got just a few slides again, and I'll just hit the highlights for you. And that's not going to be an easy thing to do, given all the things that we do at Leon County. So Commissioners, let me first say that what you'll hear and read in the annual report would not have been possible without the clear and consistent direction that we receive from this board, and I can't stress that enough. I'm going to hand out, Commissioners, right off the presses, the annual report. Mr. Chairman, if you'll help me out, this will be, do get one to, this will be Herb's last annual report, so this is kind of ceremonious right here as I hand this one off. But Commissioners, again, this is the full seventy-eight-page version of the annual report. And as it's going around, again, let me thank you on behalf of all the Leon County employees for believing in them and for continuing to believe in this organization. Speaking of our team, again, here at the outset, Commissioners, I can't say enough about the commitment and dedication of our talented employees who are absolutely critical year in and year out to our continuing to be able to produce big results for the citizens that we serve. And as always, again, to our citizens, as I mentioned, they're a big part of this and are many, many community partners. We don't do any of the things that we do in Leon County. Again, we couldn't do them alone, so big thanks to all those folks. So, again, Commissioners, just a few slides to hit the highlights of the annual report. It follows a familiar format to each of you. It's our strategic plan, of course. And Commissioners, I'll just remind you, we are in the third year of our five-year strategic plan. The two thousand nineteen annual reports provides highlights on our progress toward our seventy-five strategic initiatives, sixteen targets, four bold goals, and all aligned in those four strategic priority areas. And you'll see that the execution of our plan continues to yield exceptional results for our community. And just a reminder, you'll receive even a more detailed dive into the strategic plan at your retreat as we do each year. But Commissioners, before I get into the, some of the strategic priority areas and what we've been able to achieve in two thousand nineteen in those areas, let me first hit just a few highlights on the county's fiscal stewardship over the past year, which of course is critical to all of the things that we do in Leon County. First, as you'll see on the screen, Commissioners, the county balanced the two thousand nineteen budget with no change for the eighth year in a row in the property tax millage rate or the EMS, or the EMS MSTU. And from big things like that in the area of fiscal stewardship to smaller things like eliminating the rural waste service center fees, as you saw on the video, saving customers more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, I should note. We demonstrated again in two thousand nineteen our commitment to the taxpayer and all the things we do. Perhaps nothing exemplified this, Commissioner, in two thousand nineteen than your approval of the multi-year fiscal plan to avoid four point six million dollars in anticipated fee and tax increases, again, in the MSTU, the EMS MSTU, the solid waste non-advalorem assessment, and the fire services fee. You did that, Commissioners, in a year where you also provided critical funding to address infrastructure needs, public safety improvements, and a pretty significant spike due to the presidential election in twenty twenty. I didn't want to move past this one too quick, too quickly, Commissioners. This multi-year plan adopted by the board was huge for the taxpayers of Leon County. It may not be fully appreciated outside these chambers because it's difficult to grasp those things which didn't happen. But, but again, these were taxes and fees that were scheduled to increase as the cost to support services have increased over a long number of years, but we were able to avoid them entirely through sound fiscal planning. Of course, Commissioners, employees continue to play a very big role in our efficiency and innovation efforts. I should note, just this year alone, employees, Leon County employees identified another fifty-four thousand dollars in recurring and ninety-three thousand dollars in one-time cost savings. That brings our total to twenty-eight point nine million dollars just since two thousand thirteen through our internal efficiency efforts. And of course, we bring those to you each year before we even start the budget process. In addition, Commissioners, in two thousand nineteen, we continued to reduce our county's outstanding debt, and this county is poised to be debt-free by two thousand twenty-five, which is saying something. Due to all this, Commissioners, and a lot more in this area of fiscal stewardship, we at Leon County continue to rank among the most efficient counties in the state. We continue to maintain the lowest net budget per capita, and we continue to maintain the second-lowest number of employees as compared to our peers. I like to remind people, Commissioners, that while those are impressive metrics, it's so much more telling when you consider the fact that we do this year in and year out with some of the most property off the tax rolls of any county in the state of Florida. But, and as important as these efficiency metrics are, Commissioners, and they certainly are, what's really important at the end of the day is achieving results with the resources you have. And so, again, I'm gonna now turn to the four strategic priority areas and just hit just a few highlights in each one of them, Commissioners, starting with the strategic priority of the economy. It's been an exciting year, Commissioners, two thousand nineteen, as we continue to grow and diversify our local economy. For example, as you'll see, Leon County had another record-setting year in tourism. And as this board knows, you place a tremendous emphasis on tourism because of the overall impact that it has on the economy. We attracted another two point five million visitors to Leon County in two thousand nineteen. That supported over fifteen thousand tourism-related jobs, and it generated an estimated overall economic impact to our community of over nine hundred seventy million dollars in two thousand nineteen. And again, that continues, with that continued success, we remain on track to exceed our bold goal of growing our five-year tourism economy to over five billion dollars. These efforts, Commissioners, played a very big part in our community recently being named one of the South's Best Cities by Southern Living magazine. Also in the area of economy, we continue to build our skilled workforce, Commissioners, by holding the fourth annual Leon Works Expo, where we had another record-setting year with over five hundred attendees. It was a big year for OEV, our Economic Development Office, as we continued our momentum in implementing our community's first Economic Development Strategic Plan with such high-priority items in two thousand nineteen as our two thousand nineteen disparity study, kicking off our training our talent series where we bring in world-class speakers to help our local businesses develop their talent, sort of our economic ecosystem members, and by launching our magnetics Capital of the World campaign, again, which helped us increase prospects for research and business development in that cluster, threefold, from thirteen to thirty-eight in two thousand nineteen. Also, Commissioners, in two thousand nineteen, in the area of economic development, one of the key roles that we play, of course, is in the area of infrastructure when it comes to economic development. In two thousand nineteen, we began the last segment, the last ninety-million-dollar segment of Capital Circle, which, again, is a critical transportation corridor when it comes to efficiently moving goods and services and creating so many other economic opportunities. Commissioners, moving to the area of the environment, again, just a few highlights. We continue to make significant progress to remove five hundred septic tanks over the next five years from the Waukulla Springs Basin. In two thousand nineteen, we completed a hundred and seventy-nine. It's a really big number when you consider, in all of our previous years, we removed exactly zero. So again, Commissioners, a hundred and seventy-nine. We also began the design work, as you know, Commissioner Proctor, to, to construct the Woodville Sewer Project, which is gonna bring another eleven hundred sewers online. And with each one of these projects, Commissioners, including four neighborhood retrofit projects that we have ongoing as we speak, we've leveraged county funds dollar for dollar with state grant funding, about forty-five million dollars in total. We've continued, Commissioners, in this area of the environment to expand the county's PACE program. We had another twenty-eight homes this year through PACE where we brought our total to nearly a million dollars of improvements financed through the PACE program. We implemented our Integrated Sustainability Action Plan, which includes eighteen goals and another ninety-four action items of its own to foster a more sustainable future and to reduce the county's greenhouse gas emissions by thirty percent, by thirty thirty. That was a goal that you all established. We also created the Capital Area Sustainability Compact this year, bringing together some of the largest organizations in our community to collaborate, work together to achieve even bigger sustainability objectives. And finally, Commissioners, we are in the throes of our landfill project and to close our landfill in the most environmentally sensitive manner possible and moving forward with our Appalachian Regional Park Master Plan implementation. Commissioners, in the area of quality of life, we've made so much progress in two thousand nineteen in improving the lives of people of our community in so many different ways. Just a few to name. An important example would be Leon County EMS training another thousand citizens in two thousand nineteen in CPR and AED usage. We have maintained a cardiac survival rate, Commissioner Delo, you like metrics, how about this one? A cardiac survival rate in Leon County of forty-one percent. The national average is about eighteen percent. So, and as important as that metric is, Commissioners, here's another one. We helped more than forty-six hundred local veterans and their families receive over twenty-three million dollars in veterans' benefits. That's from our three-person veteran shop here at Leon County. In the area of affordable housing, we provided down payment assistance to fifty-five first-time homebuyers. We assisted ninety-nine Leon County homeowners with home repair rehabilitation projects. We created the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium as our first community land trust. And of course, through the leadership of this board, we supported the purpose-built communities and the Orange Avenue Apartments redevelopment project. Finally, Commissioners, in two thousand nineteen, we partnered with the Knight Communities Foundation and toured five communities around the country and their public library systems to bring back best practices right here as we serve our one point five million visitors annually through our library system. And again, Commissioners, that begins to, it just begins to scratch the surface in this broad category. Brings us to our last category, Commissioners, which is our strategic priority of governance. We continued our organization-wide efforts to set the standard in public service, and a big way we did that this year was through our efforts to ensure the community's swift and thorough recovery in the weeks and months following Hurricane Michael. That included the clearing of over a thousand roads. It included removing over a million yards of debris. We implemented one hundred percent of the recommendations from the Hurricane Michael After Action Report. With respect to female reimbursements, we recovered more than fifteen million dollars in storm-related costs from hurricanes for me and Irma and Michael to date, which Commissioners puts us in Leon County in the highest tier among all Florida counties in reimbursements back to our, to our community. We also demonstrated our commitment to maintaining the highest ethical standards with the passage of the Leon County Ethics Code ordinance and by training one hundred percent of our Leon County employees on the new code and employee standards of conduct. And in two thousand nineteen, Commissioners, as the video said, we were once again recognized for best practices in county government with the Florida Association's highest award for innovative programs and services, as well as another dozen national best practice awards from NACO, which brings our total over the past seven years to sixty-eight. But who's counting? You know I'm counting, Commissioners, that's rhetorical. Finally, Commissioners, that's a lot. I'm bringing it in for a landing. Let me just say that, as you know, it just scratches the surface of what we've been able to accomplish together in two thousand nineteen on behalf of and alongside our citizens. I want to thank the board again for your leadership that you continue to provide to us. It's absolutely critical in everything we were able to accomplish as an organization this year. And of course, I need to commend our Leon County staff, who I consider myself very lucky to serve with each and every day for the dedication and commitment. I say it all the time, Commissioners, but ours is as talented and hard-working a workforce as you'll find anywhere in any organization. Again, Commissioners, the annual report in the video will be available on our website, and we will share it far and wide. With that, Commissioners, again, I thank you. We're looking forward to a great nineteen-twenty, and that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Not bad. Commissioner Proctor is in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lindley.
We're not going back to nineteen-twenty, but I will join him in two thousand twenty and with our staff. This is a damn good report, and the church can say amen. Vince, this is, your report is the reason why our commission is never necessarily in awe of other counties when we're at the National Association of Counties. We're never really overly impressed or overwhelmed by, impressed, of course, by many counties' work, but we ain't overwhelmed by nobody. And I think that for the number of years at which Vince's staff and our totally un-county community has operated at such high levels of efficiencies speaks to the commitment, leadership that's been provided. And I'm really, man, I wish I could find another word to say, but I can't think of another one other to say that I'm really impressed. I'm really impressed. And Vince is doing an outstanding job of Florida Best Practices Award. The only thing I could think about, Vince, as well, on that presentation is if Gene Deckerhoff was the voice. Look, I know you would fight him, you know, for him to do that role. Vince is always the voice, and he's not gonna give up that very, very, very easily. I guess, having served a longer tenure here, to note the elevations of Vince, his gain, the actualization of his vision, and to have seen Vince, I think, almost as a student, a graduate student or something around here, but very, very early in his career, never ever dreamed that his report would be of this nature of grandeur, but it's really stimulated, Vince, and kudos to all of our staff. You're really outstanding, very, very proud of who we have. Now, we're gonna be a debt-free community, Vince said, in two thousand twenty-five, and I'm gonna hold you to it, Vince. I'll be right here, and I'm gonna hold you to it in two thousand twenty-five, and I hope that you're here in two thousand twenty-five to make sure that what you're saying, we're gonna stand up and live up to it. There is a category which I would like to lift up in this rising tide of, of high achievement. And I do think, Commissioners, that there is just simply room for, within our Office of Economic Development, that there is room for increased participation and success for our women and minority vendors. And of the exciting things that have occurred in this huge and massive report to think that could happen in one year, the way it's been orchestrated, it's been beautiful. But when it comes to the bottom line of the rising tide and increased dollars from our coffers that go to our women and minority business, that has not accelerated and kept pace with the wonderful things that we've done. But to hold the line year after year for eight years with the same millage rate and to have compressed all of the services in the tight budget that does not expand is truly, I think, close to miraculous. When we have a legislature that is somewhat hostile, and Mayor Mox used to say that they were hostile to North Florida, and I agree that we don't get our fair shake, but we have not been shaggity nor raggedy in the presentation of our county's government, notwithstanding support which could be greater but is not provided, to amplify the presence of, of our state's capital county. We are not rewarded, we are not awarded, we are not provided what a state's capital county ought to get from its state legislature. But we still ain't raggedy nor shaggity as a result of what we don't. But we still ain't raggedy nor shaggity as a result of what we don't get. I respect your work, Vince. I'm appreciative to it. Please increase our minority and our women business fortunes. I hope that one day we will be the pride. In fact, the nation will be jealous of the work that you've achieved in that area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Next, we have Commissioner Minor and then Commissioner Deloze.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, if you think back, back to Bobby Bowden during his heyday, I mean, I think we, I think people grew accustomed to excellence, but we shouldn't, in that case or in this case. I'm new here, but continually, every time I learn more about the county, I went on a department tour a couple of weeks ago for a department I didn't really know much about, but it just revealed to me another layer of how incredible this Leon County organization is. Starts with the county administrator, of course, but the staff that we have here. I mean, there are people here that are talented, intelligent, working very hard to serve the people that live in this county, and to continually see that everywhere I look really means something. And I've said this before at a previous meeting, but, you know, the public that lives here in Leon County doesn't necessarily know this, but the Florida Association of Counties gets together frequently to welcome new county commissioners, give training to the new as well as the older ones. And our county administrator, Vince Long, and his staff are frequently, often, regularly participating in those education seminars because the state of Florida looks to Leon County as a model for how to do things right. So, when I, when I, as a new, as a new county commissioner, going through that training and seeing our county ministry there, our county attorney there, and many of our staff there, providing training to other county officials from around the state, it really opened my eyes on exactly how special this place is. So, congratulations to our county administrator, to all the staff that work incredibly hard. Kudos.
Commissioner Deloze, before I let you speak, I want you to be sure to bring up the numbers that I should be able to recite by now, 13 years ago, what the budget was at, and then what it is now.
I'll bring that. So, 13 years ago, force court said, no, budget was $284 million 13 years ago when John Daley and I got elected, Mayor Daley, and it is now $274 million. So, I think that says a lot. And I wanted to repeat Commissioner Minor's comments, which kudos to the staff. Those of us up here have kind of an easy lift, the rest of you guys make it work, and we couldn't do it without you. So, thank you. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Motion's been made, seconded by Commissioner Deloze. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Administrator.
So far, it has a million views, but it was all me over just the last couple of days. But yes, we will make sure we get it out. That's what, that's what Matt's standing there, ready to do.
And it's, the Emmys have already been awarded for this year.
Maybe next year. All right. Thank you, Mr. Administrator, Matt, and all the staff. We appreciate all the work that you do. Like Vice Chair Deloze said, it is, it's easier from up here than it is in the trenches day-to-day, so thank you so much. We'll move on to item number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 17 seeks your consideration of a resolution encouraging the elimination of single-use plastic straws and a county policy banning their use at county operations. Commissioners, you'll recall back in May, you requested an analysis, the analysis that's before you now, including the feedback we received from stakeholders. I know Maggie and Tessa are on deck and happy to answer any questions you might have. And let me just check very quickly. Yes, I do have three speaker cards on this item.
Okay. I think we'll take our speakers first, and then we'll entertain them. Motion after that. If you would, as you come to the podium, you have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
The first speaker, Olivia Babas.
You can use this mic.
Sorry, I can't see around the corner, so. My name is Olivia Babas. I live at 2416 Formosa Drive in Tallahassee. I am actually new to Tallahassee. I moved here in May for a new job. Previously lived in Sarasota. If you can't tell, I am a member of the disability community, if that is not blatantly obvious. But there are many people within the disability community that do not have visible disabilities. We are seeing straw bans passed across the country and across the state, and it is doing a great deal of harm to people in the disability community. We've already had one person die in a location where plastic straws were banned. She had an acquired disability that caused her to be vulnerable to falls. She fell while holding a cup with a metal straw in it that went through her eye and pierced her brain, and she died of a traumatic brain injury. I'm sure when she got up that morning, that was not how she was expecting her day to go. But these are issues that the disability community has been talking about for two years, that these were going to do harm to the disability community, and we were right. We have people that are getting sick from paper straws because they contain gluten. They were never designed to be used in hot or cold liquids. All of the alternatives to plastic straws are not new. They're being marketed and repackaged as new items, but these are things that have been around, some of them for thousands of years. Plant-based materials for straws were used in ancient Mesopotamia, and we have evidence of this in royal tombs. Metal straws were used in pre-Columbian South America. Paper straws were invented over 150 years ago. These are all items that the disability community has rejected and rejected decades ago because plastic straws gave people with disabilities the ability to drink hot and cold liquids independently without obtaining bacterial infection because the reusable straws can grow mold and bacteria. There is no such thing as a permanently reusable straw. For people that use straws every day, all day, you can only clean them so much, and that's if someone has the ability to clean straws. Many people in the disability community depend on PCAs that have very limited amounts of hours, and they don't have somebody that can clean a straw for them, or they may not be in a location where we're able to do that. And we should not be putting the burden of accessibility on the disability community to make us go around and carry our straws. So what we're debating here is whether the civil rights and the health and safety of the disability community are up for negotiation and debate, and the answer to that should be no.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Administrator.
Next speaker, Teresa Wells.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's so nice to be here. I'm Teresa Wells. I live at 1227 North M.L. King Jr. Boulevard. A special shout-out to my commissioner in District 1, Bill Proctor. He does a great job for us, and I think he will be around in 2023.
You can repeat that.
I'm here representing the League of Women Voters Tallahassee and very, very loosely kind of a task force that Olivia has served, own with me and other members of the environmental First of all, before I forget, I do want to congratulate y'all on a great year. That was impressive. And I want to thank you so much for taking up the single-use plastics issue. We're so proud and pleased. That comes from Terry Cleland, our president. You have such an important role here. Not only do you have the opportunity to set an example for the community, encouraging them to reduce their single-use plastics, but to help determine policy, even at the city level. They're looking to you to see what you're going to do to them, to know how they want to proceed. So your role is very key. I also wanted to say how much members of the Climate Change and Sustainability Committee enjoyed meeting with so many of you. I apologize we didn't get to everyone. There were scheduling conflicts, illness, recess, but we look forward to working with you in the future on this and other issues. The letter you received from the League was really pretty moderate. We're kind of a conservative group. We didn't ask for a lot. It does not mean that we're not concerned about single-use plastics. We ask a minimum, but you can certainly do more. We, it is a problem. I understand even from some of you that our waste company is struggling to deal with disposal or distribution of single-use plastics. Countries aren't accepting single-use plastics like they used to. It's something we're going to have to address as a community. I want to mention straws. Olivia, of course, talked about how the disability community feels, and we really honor how they feel. It's my understanding, and she can speak for herself, that the disability community is not opposed to straws upon request, but they don't want to have to identify themselves as being special or coming forward with their disabled condition. That doesn't have to be done.
Thank you.
Am I, am I over time?
Yeah, that's your.
I'm sorry. Okay. Y'all do, y'all help us out here. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for coming out. We have one additional speaker, Mr. Administrator.
John Hedrick.
Mr. Hedrick, name and address for the record.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. John Hedrick, 1550 One Cristobal Drive, Number 1, here in Tallahassee. I'm here on behalf of the Democratic Environmental Caucus of Leon County, and I'm going to read you our brief resolution that, for whatever reason, was not mentioned anywhere in the package that you've got, though I know Howard Kessler, on behalf, delivered it to everybody for us. To our Leon County Commissioners and Tallahassee City Commissioners, the Democratic Environmental Caucus of Leon County supports your move towards banning, with a certain exception, that will affect the disabled community, of the use of single-use plastic straws on government properties and at government events, both directly through the government and through vendors, concessionaires. We urge that you make this effective, well, obviously, as when you do this now, it would be, at the time we wrote this, within the next three or four months, now it'll be fairly immediate. We further urge you to ban the use of single-use plastic styrofoam products on government properties at government events and through vendors, concessionaires, in a similar timeframe. Finally, we would urge you to place the community on track to ban the use and sale of these products in our community, with the exception of single-use plastic straws for the disabled community and others, within the next two years, as being considered and done in various localities around the country. That was where we wrote the time. Since that time, obviously, you've proposed an ordinance and a resolution that's coming up. We would, on the resolution, we would ask that you review what you're doing with the resolution within some timeframe. I'm going to take a wild guess and say maybe a year's appropriate to see how things are going in the just general community in all these areas, and see what progress is being made on this voluntary basis at this point in time. With the mandatory, I think you might want to expand that to also include those you contract with and also the concessionaires that you do business with. I think that might be appropriate for your ordinance that you have handy. And also, I think the straws on demand that's been talked about seems like a good idea, and whatever else you feel appropriate to strengthen in these two areas, we would certainly approve of you doing. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have several Commissioners in queue to speak. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate all of the speakers. This has been an interesting time for this discussion to take place, and I think one thing I would like to acknowledge upfront, and we, I think, touched on this in our last discussion, straws have gotten a lot of attention across the country, but it is, I think, Terry, you might have said this, 0.01 percent of what has been counted?
I think about 0.025.
0.025 percent of what's been counted among the plastic that is polluting our oceans and other places. So that is a very small percentage, but every bit does help. With that consideration, I like the direction we're moving in. However, I am concerned about the straws on request issue and the need for plastic, for sure. I know a lot of people in the dyes know this, but I'll go ahead and say it, I have celiac. So if I was ever given a straw that had gluten in it, I would get sick. And most people are not educated about what straws contain, and they don't even know that you can find gluten in things like adhesives and other things like that. So this is an issue that would affect me, and by looking at me, you wouldn't know that I could be sick by some type of straw. So I think the education piece is really critical, and Olivia, I'm sorry, I'm really glad you brought that point up. And with our public education, I would like to see us focus on straws on demand versus outright getting rid of straws, to be sensitive to many of us who may have issues. For someone like me, I just would skip using a straw, but I think that this is something we need to be sensitive to. I will also say that I barely mentioned industrial hemp during our legislative workshop, and this is, we have a summit with over 200 people coming in a little over a week. What is really needed in this space is a new product that can be used for hot and cold, and something like a hemp-based plastic in the future could do us a great deal of good to solve both the health issues and everything else, the access, as well as single-use plastics. So, Mr. Chair, I wanted to raise that issue. I like the posture we're in right now, but I want to make sure that we are sensitive to the transition we're going through, looking for new materials, and that the education for particular restaurants in the community talks about things in straws that, in alternatives paper straws, that could make some people sick, and having straws on demand. Last comment here, I think we should look in the next year, I like John's comment about reviewing this the next year, about reducing single-use plastics in general. Could we encourage local businesses not to use as much packaging or bags or things of that nature? So this is a start. We need to be sensitive to everybody's perspective, and I hope we can expand the public education piece in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier and Ms. Wells, I think you stole my talking point. I was going to talk about the plastic waste in the ocean, 8 million tons every single year added to what's already there, but a very small percentage, less than three tenths, three hundredths of a percentage of that is plastic straws by weight. So it's a very, very small portion of what we're talking about in terms of overall plastic waste. However, it's still important, it's still symbolic, we still need to make some progress on it. You know, I used to teach legislative policy at TCC and FSU, and I used to always look for a great case study, policy-wise, that would help touch a lot of different constituencies and a lot of different angles to use that as a vehicle for training, for educating students. This is a great example. You've got the environmental community, you've got the private sector with restaurants, you have the people with disabilities, that community there, all have different angles on this issue. Tessa Schreiner, you did a great job on the agenda item, you and your folks, Maggie, terrific work on this agenda item. I like what the approach is, but given what we've heard from the disabled community prior to today, as well as Ms. Babas's comments from today, I agree with Commissioner Dozier's direction on this. I would like to not adopt option one or option two, but rather, I think this, I think this issue has a lot more momentum behind it in terms of options coming up with plastic straw substitutes that may not exist now, but may exist in a year or two. So where I'm going with this, I'm of the opinion now that we ought to adopt a resolution encouraging restaurants and other private sector businesses, as well as the county, to adopt an upon-request type of approach. I think that's probably the most sensible step right now. Okay? So moved then? I think that's the most sensible option right now. I think there's been a tremendous amount of global attention on this, and I think there are probably, the hemp industry, as well as every, you know, a lot of other industries are out there working hard to come up with a real solution that could address the single-use plastic waste issue, as well as the needs of the disabled community. So that'd be my motion. Glad to hear that, Commissioner Deloze, you've seconded it.
So let me just, let me clarify, it's kind of a hybrid between one and two. You'd like to adopt the resolution encouraging businesses, businesses and individuals, as well as the county, correct?
Yes.
To eliminate the use of single-use plastic straws and other single-use plastics.
Encourage, encourage.
All right.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not clear on anything.
On point. Commissioner Lindley.
So even on county property and at county events, you're saying it would be request only?
I was thinking about this. You know, I don't remember going to a county event where we had straws at all. I don't know how often that happens. So I'm unclear on how that would work within the county, within the county events.
Administrator. Have you met Maggie and Tessa?
I have.
Okay. I want to address that, Maggie or Tessa?
Thank you, Maggie.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the discussion. To the point, we very rarely provide straws or styrofoam at county events. Where we find it most commonly is not in a traditional CMR, Community Engagement Event, but more so a employee training or internal, you know, lunch for perhaps the wellness program and internal education. So it's less so for community-facing events. We generally do not provide straws now. We could consider possibly having them upon request, but we don't, it's not an existing practice.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you, Maggie. Appreciate it.
All right, I do have Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I had a cup of iced tea, kind of wet my whistle, and that cup is heavier than several straws. And I had also a little bottle of water, both of them are plastic, and this thingy with a plastic top is heavier than some straws. There are three things that I, I think that we should encourage restaurants to have as a matter of cleanness and sanitation, and that is for straws, and I'm for plastic straws. I am for toilet paper, and I am for hand towels in a bathroom in restaurants. When you begin to take shortcuts on those things and cheapen, it just, it goes, once the first domino fall down the hill, you start telling people, don't, don't have, you know, certain products. And I think that we should maintain high standards, equal to the level of the county administrators' report, and the excellence with which we effectuate the work of the county. And that excellence is further maintained and effectuated by providing a broad mix of paper straw, plastic straw. I think Commissioner Minor brought us a metal straw.
I did.
I mean, but why can't we have that variety? So for me, I know that Sen Yards, and I've told Commissioner Deloge some years ago that I was willing to have a cook-off, because I know that the very best seafood in Leon County is cooked and prepared in District One at Sen Yards, but he's never brought a business from his district to challenge us, and that's wise. But Sen Yards uses plastic utensils, plastic forks, knives, styrofoam plates, plastic cups, and the amount of, is a word called plasticity? Is there such a word? And if it is, they add to the plasticity of our county greatly, and straws don't. So it's a lot of work, and I respect the effort and the words and the trees that got killed to write these words on it, but let's not overcomplicate something that's not moving the needle at all. That small percentage is sort of, kind of like what State Attorney Campbell said, we don't know how to determine point oh, some other three oh, in hemp and marijuana, and you can't distinguish it. So we don't know how to prosecute it. It's like, how do you, you know, straws is, we got some big issues and stuff to take care of, Mr. Chairman, and straws has not, has not risen to the level of the county's attention.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. See another, Commissioner Dozier on point, and then we'll entertain the alternative motion.
Please.
Clarification of the motion?
Yeah, this is what I have. Tell me if it captures it. Adopt a resolution encouraging businesses, individuals, and county staff to eliminate and limit the use of single-use plastic straws and other single-use plastics.
And adopt it upon request?
Oh, and adopt it upon request.
Chairman, basically, it's as you stated, except, replace, eliminate, to encourage the, to provide single-use plastic straws upon request only, for both private sector and county events.
Sure. I may ask Commissioner Minor, since he's captured it so well. All right, Commissioner Dozier, and then we'll vote.
Correct. Well, that's, my motion stands alone. That'd be, that basically could, would take care of all the other options. So this would, this motion here would replace any other option.
Right. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know if this motion is approved, it may appear to many that we are dialing back our interest in eliminating single-use straws. I'm hopeful that people understand that this, like so many things, takes incremental progress. I did intend to say earlier that even in our own offices, fifth floor here, we should have straws-on-demand if we ever have meetings with people who may need them. I mean, this is a complicating factor. However, we also spend a tremendous amount of money on waste collection and burying single-use plastic, even if it doesn't make it to the oceans. It's polluting other areas. So I wonder if, maybe in the spring, Mr. County Administrator, we could also, I don't know if that's the right timing, but thinking about budget, look at how the public education program is going and expand this to focus on single-use plastics in general. I think that could go a long way, because different businesses will use different types of packaging, as I said before. So I'm not sure we want to add it to the motion at this point, Commissioner Minor, I'd be open to that, but I just wanted to put that out there, because I don't want to lose the thread of single-use plastics in general, and I think you're absolutely right, we're going to see not just one alternative, but possibly many alternatives coming in the future.
Mr. Chairman, on point.
Please.
To address Commissioner Dozier's, I agree with you. I also am concerned about the message this might send to sustainability groups. I did check with two representatives of two sustainability groups, and they are in agreement with this upon-request-only approach. That was a key part of my consideration, because like you, I share, and I think this whole commission shares, a key focus on reducing plastic waste.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindley on point.
On point. I will, I will support the substitute, but I do think we're kind of abdicating our leadership role through this approach. I think the culture is already ahead of us. A lot of organizations, including Sustainable Tallahassee and others, are moving forward. I appreciate that we will try to do education and come back later, but I think we actually are stepping back, and I think that's going to be a hard, hard argument. We need to be moving forward in many more ways, in all kinds of plastics, and I would like to see the legislature lift its heavy foot from our necks on plastic bags as well. So I understand baby steps, but I do think that the county's losing its leadership position by doing this.
Thank you. So let me phrase the motion as I understand it, adopt a resolution encouraging businesses, individuals, and county staff to eliminate the use of single-use plastic straws and other single-use plastics, and adopt it upon requests. Correct?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes six-one. In the interest of, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, five-two. In the interest of time, I'd like to go ahead and call on the commissioners and remind you that we will be breaking shortly. I'd like to push on through the items to number twenty. If we don't finish that shortly, we may suspend those additional items until after a public hearing that's already scheduled for six. So, Mr. Administrator? Yes, sir?
I'm, I'm going to make a motion for Option Number One on item number eighteen.
We have any speakers on that item?
Would you not?
No, motion and second on, oh, we don't have a speaker. Motion and a second for item, or excuse me, for Agenda Item Eighteen, oh, Option One. On point?
Mr. Chair, I just want to take a moment. This is a huge undertaking to craft this RFP, to reflect on where we've been the last few years, and, I'm sorry, not RFP, intent to bid. I read your mind there, Mr. County Administrator, and I really appreciate the forward-thinking approach in this item and the new issues that will be addressed, including commercial recycling in the unincorporated area, and how we're going to deal with yard debris and other things like that. So I think this really captures a lot of the concerns we've heard from citizens in recent years, and I'm looking forward to this process, but I'm really glad we're getting started. So thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and to our staff who worked long and hard on it, I'm sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I would encourage staff to make sure that minority participation is seriously factored into this particular invitation to bid that we're putting out.
Thank you. Motion's been, along with a second, to approve Option One. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Onto item nineteen. Mr. Administrator. Motion has been made. Any speakers on item nineteen?
We have no speakers on item nineteen.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Delo, no, Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Deloge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty.
Mr. Chair, item twenty is the resolution I asked for to last minute. I appreciate the board allowing the resolution to come back to us. Thank you, staff, for crafting it, and I want to go ahead and move staff recommendation on it, our approval of the resolution.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Deloge. And, Commissioner Deloge?
Yeah, just real briefly. This is a ceremonial, it's a, it's a nod to try and basically clean this up. We legally, we, oh, I'm asking her of this. This legally, we're bound, this really doesn't accomplish anything, but it's a ceremonial.
Mr. Attorney, do you mind?
Although it does encourage potential state legislation.
Okay. No, I appreciate, I think it's appropriate. I just want to, I mean, it's, I remember when this first got brought up, and I thought there's, you're not going to be able to do anything in the court of law over this, but frankly, it's a little offensive to have this stuff still hanging out there. So, okay, I'm good. Thanks.
In great agreement, and Commissioner Dozier, before I vote.
Mr. Chair, do we want to consider adding this to our legislative priorities? I noted at the city when they did the resolution, I believe Commissioner Richardson did highlight this as a legislative priority, and I believe Representative Osley is already engaged on this.
Mr. Chair, I'll accept that amendment.
And I actually see Andy Johnson smoke coming off of his pad back there in the crowd, so a motion has been made to add it to our state legislative priorities as well. I think we have to take a vote on the, on the original motion, and then that motion... Okay, add it as, okay, good. A motion's been made and has been seconded to add that as part of our state legislative priority list. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We will, any other items? We will meet on the dot at six o'clock for our regularly scheduled public hearing. Do we have a motion to adjourn?